Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time. We're here this evening for a Collington County Council's special meeting. Today is Tuesday, June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. It is six P. M. At this time, I'd like to call the role of Vice Chairman Taylor. Here. Councilman Flowers.
Yeah.
Councilman Wetzel.
Yeah.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Madam Curran, please let the record reflect we have a floor's present. Before we get started, as typical, we're going to have the indication of pledge of leaders. I'm going to ask Councilman Taylor if he would lead us, but I'm also going to ask him if he would, if we could have a tomorrow, but as y'all well aware, is the today is the eve of the fifth anniversary of the Charleston Nine. And as you remember, of course, one of the victims of that Charleston Nine was Senator Pinkney, who represented this county. And I think it'll be appropriate this evening if we have a moment's silence before Mr. Taylor's prayer and the members of the Charleston Nine. If anyone please stand.
Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we are extremely eternally grateful for all of your magical grace that you bestowed upon each of us. Lord, without your mercy and without your grace, we couldn't be here tonight. Lord, we thank you for Collington County, for the Collington County Council, the administration, all the staff, those who live, work, play here, Father. We thank you that your grace is on our lives to do good. And Lord, we pray, Lord, that we would be found faithful, because your word says that it's required of a steward, that he be found faithful. Lord, we can only be found faithful by your great providence and what you provide for us. So we thank you that you crown our heads with knowledge, wisdom, and understanding. Lord, given us the compassion of Christ, the show the love of God, and to do the things and handle our business affairs with prudence, and we'll give your name to Frank's Providence in his name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Taylor. Before we get started, there are some items that were added on the before your seats this evening. We've got a budget update on the budget, some information to from the Association of Counties that was sent out. I'd just like to point your attention to that. We'll get started here on the agenda. The first item we have is approval of minutes of the regular meeting of April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty. We've got a motion in the second. Is there any discussion?
Discussion. Mr. Chairman, I would like for in the near future, when I reference to something and vote against, that I would like for that to be reflected in the minutes.
Okay. I think if you're actually, if you don't refer something, it should be reflected.
It's put on there as a, Mr. Williams opposed.
Yes, it's reflected as me opposed, but I'd like to, for it to be a part of the record why I oppose that as opposed to not having it for a future reason. I don't want to be seen as just a grown-up, old guy. I want people to understand why.
One direction.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Here again, all the papers say, if I'll say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Raises to item five, rewards and reconnitions. And we do have one item this evening, a proclamation regarding the Gullah Geechee Nation Appreciation Week. And at this time, I'll read a proclamation into the record. So claiming the week of July twenty-fifth through August first, two thousand and twenty is Gullah Geechee Nation Appreciation Week. Whereas Collington County is one of the oldest counties in Safranah in the eighteenth century, Collington County and the Safranah Coast became the locale of some of the richest rice plantations in the South, which were linked to specific West African ethnic groups who became known as Gullah Geechee. And whereas the Gullah Geechee civilization originated in West Africa and its people came to the United States as slaves to work on rice plantations specifically in the coastal regions, including South Carolina. And with their African fair or original language and craftsmanship, the Gullah Geechee people left their mark on Southeastern South Carolina. And whereas the Gullah Geechee culture has had a powerful impact on the Low Country and South Carolina, including Collington County, and these Gullah Geechee influences have helped to define our Southern lifestyle and culture. And whereas the preservation and celebration of the Gullah Geechee culture has gained momentum due to the Gullah Geechee cultural heritage that created by United States Representative James Flatter, as well as the efforts of others such as Queen Chetis and Gullah Geechee Nation, and Kwame Shaw, co-founders of the International Gullah Geechee Nation Celebration and the annual Gullah Geechee Nation Music and Movement Festival. And whereas the twentieth century, twentieth anniversary of Gullah Geechee Nation is being celebrated under the theme hashtag Gullah Geechee Twenty. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the importance of bringing awareness and appreciation for this rich culture and history in order to increase understanding of all contributions to Gullah Geechee, Gullah Geechee given to our area. Now therefore, be resolved that Collington County Council does hereby recognize the two thousand and twenty Gullah Geechee Nation International Music and Movement Festival as claiming the week of July twenty-fifth through August first is Gullah Geechee Nation Appreciation Week in Collington County and encourages its sitting citizens to participate in educational activities aimed at increasing both knowledge and appreciation of this rich culture. And that will be the sixteenth day of June, two thousand and twenty.
So hold.
Second. We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Here again, all the papers say, if I'll say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That would bring us to item six, the administrative brief.
Mr. Chairman, Council, good evening. I have a number of items for you this evening to go through real quick, but first of all, I just wanted to give you an update, update on our COVID-nineteen situation and the reopening of the county. We were able to, we actually did a soft opening last week. We've had some offices are a little more difficult to secure with call guards and some other things such as that. We got everybody opened up on Monday. We still have two offices in the Harrelson Building, which would be the assessor's office and the planting and development office that are still operating by appointment, but I got notified today that they're protective guards. So Veterans Affairs is also operating by appointment only. They've got some complications over there because you have to go through the State Health Department and Clemson Extension to get to their office, but we're making some additional changes over there to give her better access as well as get some guards. But she is able to operate now by appointment to get the veterans what they need over there as well. We have been working, switching gears over to, and I've got David here who'll probably give you a little bit more detailed update, working on, still working on tornado recovery, a number of items there through the tornado. One of the things that's a very important process that we've started developing is what's called a, a long-term recovery group, which is recommended by FEMA and State EMD. What a long-term recovery group does is this group is made up of a group of citizens to assist in the recovery efforts and also to raise money and funding or gather donations or folks volunteer to that gap that we have where maybe you have a property that FEMA funding doesn't apply, they don't, they're not eligible for the FEMA funding there, maybe by ownership or it was a rental or some other things, or the FEMA funding doesn't cover enough, there's a gap there that this group would cover. A number of other things, not just for this event, this group will be developed for any future events we may have as far as hurricanes and a lot of those other things. What was unique about this event was when you're dealing with your hurricanes, a lot of that are already getting well insured properties like at Edison Beach and some other things. This tornado really cherry picked some of the harder-hit neighborhoods were some of our least eligible to recover areas. So we've really been able to work in those areas to try to, with the long-term recovery group, to first of all, identify the needs and what they do, what they need to get out of their debris, roof fix, anything like that on housing, you get somebody to make sure they've got a roof for their head and they're able to operate. We've got a great group so far, made up of Ms. Pat Grant, Mr. Chris Bigley is serving as chairman, Mr. Skip Taft, Ms. Kelly Whitaker, and Mr. Patrick Thomas. We would like to add a few more to the LRTG group as well as we move forward. We've also got Mr. Chris Baker from FEMA, Ellison Smith with EMD, Ms. Emily Rooney from the Community Foundation of Low Country. They're actually handling, they're the 501(c)(1) sponsoring this group, and they will handle any donations that folks want to make to this fund to help with the recovery. And that you can, if you want to donate to this group, you can reach our EMD office here and they can put you in touch with the right folks at eight four three five three nine nineteen sixty. With that, David, if you want to give a quick update of the applications and such that we've gotten.
Yeah, we're, we're really excited about the long-term recovery group. And I should mention that both Mr. Griffin and Hank Amundson, they were instrumental in getting that group together. So they did a good job of getting those, volunteering those people to serve on that community. So we're really excited about going forward with that. As of yesterday, we had four hundred and thirty-six registrations for individual assistance, and that was two hundred and twenty-three homes that we identified that were damaged. So some of those duplications could be where perhaps a homeowner and a renter both apply for individual assistance, but that number seems to indicate that a lot of people have reached out. And that doesn't guarantee that they'll get assistance, and that's sort of where the LTRG comes in if they don't.
And I'll have to give our folks, our local EMD folks, some props, especially Ms. Adrienne Stokes. She took a number of folks and they actually went door-to-door within those neighborhoods to get the forms out, get the applications out for FEMA and the other. I think we were expecting, what, maybe two hundred and fifty, three hundred applications, and we just about doubled that. So that's real good and really appreciate the hard work they've had there. Moving on, we have had an ongoing issue up in Mozelle, actually between Islandson and Mozelle, with a tire stockpile. We had an individual who was up there who had, over a number of years, exceeded, far exceeded what DHEC and the law allows as far as the tire stockpile. We've had a number of complaints within that neighborhood. We were able to work with both our code enforcement, Mr. Bartley and Nuselia out at the solid waste as well as DHEC, which they secured a fifteen thousand dollar grant. And as of yesterday, that site has been completely cleaned up on Mozelle Road. It will be certified by DHEC next week. I actually went by there myself, ran by this morning because I wanted to make sure they were gone, were gone, because we had had, you know, so many calls about those. But glad to see that doing, appreciate their hard work as well. Within your packet, there is a similar sheet to what you had last time with the updated revenue numbers for the budget. I'm not going to go through this line by line, but you can read through it. It's very similar to what you saw last time, although do we have a little more detailed information. And it's becoming a little more clear where we're going to be, we think we're going to be budget-wise both this year and moving into next year. Bottom line, with our impacts from both the tornado and with the COVID situation, we're looking at about a ten-day shortage when we run about seventy-six thousand dollars a day. So right now, we're predicting we're going to be roughly seven hundred and fifty to seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the hole with those as well as the impacts, revenue impacts. The major revenue impacts are on our sales tax, local option sales tax, which is a large portion that offsets our property tax, those type items that are, that are really hitting us pretty hard. But we've got the detail in here as far as that's regarding. Also looking forward to next year to what we think we're going to expect moving forward. We do have the budget on for second reading tonight, as we discussed before. This is the budget we're proposing right now, it's just a rollover from last year's budget. The only real changes would be whatever changes we have in our benefits would be healthcare, insurance, retirement, and so forth. Hopefully, there's some conversation that the states will hold those back this year. We'll see what happens as far as that goes as well. What we're, through our discussions with the finance office, with John and everybody else, what we're proposing now is let's look at a budget, a workshop or a retreat right around the first of August, the first weekend of August. By that time, we feel like we'll have a really good idea of what both this year's impacts were on revenues and exactly what we're looking at going into next year, next year's budget. And then we can go through the full gamut of issues that we need to talk about to move forward. The state's still saying right now, from what we're hearing, that it'll be September at the earliest, they're going to have a final budget to do. And there are a lot of things riding on, not just what we're doing with the local government fund, but also what I'm talking about with the benefit issues or whether or not they're going to hold those over. We also have, there's another sheet that I've stuck in, an email we got from the Association of Counties regarding the CARES Act. South Carolina's giving one point nine billion dollars through the CARES Act to support and back up COVID issues within the state. They reached out to all counties and asked us to submit our, so far, our COVID expenditures as well as what we think we're going to spend going into the future. That's all been collected. My understanding is that's going to be reviewed at the legislature starting next week. They're having a special meeting just to deal with the CARES Act funding. And I would encourage you, if you talk with any of our legislators or if you have a few minutes, to just give them a quick call. Our impacts are in this sheet here, which right now, we're at roughly probably a hundred and six, right at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars and growing. We could get, and that's not including what we think we may have in other impacts and shortfalls and revenues and such. But any additional information you want, we're also going to put together a letter to go out to each one of them this week as well, now that we've had this information together. Have any questions as far as the budget goes? I know we've got that coming up first item on the agenda, but moving forward. Does the first of August, would that suit you all to have a budget retreat? We can, I know we had planned a retreat and that got washed out because of COVID, but we'd all, we'd all like to do another retreat, replan that and find appropriate venue.
By that time, we should have more good information regarding the budget.
Yes, sir. We should know very, pretty clear, almost, there'll be a few items that lag from a state perspective, but we should have pretty, a really good picture by the end of August of where our, this year's ending revenues are going to go. And then there should be a good bit of information out there from the state floating as to what's going to happen moving forward.
What, what do you say, Michael? It sounds like the need that we will come up with a soft voice about ten days or less, about seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred thousand dollars total. And that would have to come out in fund balance if we're going to get some, I believe, next week. Is that right?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
I'm assuming there's been no indication of what the local government's harness going to pay out the coming year?
No, because, I mean, they do that on an annual basis. There is a formula that was put in place last year to help gradually increase it. Now whether that stays in place or it's under.
And then also, and I'm going to qualify everything I'm saying by saying I haven't read the sheet yet, but the hundred and sixty-six thousand, I know you were talking about that number as being an expense, that's an expense that's actually caused, so it's not, notwithstanding the shortfall revenue from COVID-nineteen, is that correct?
That's correct. That would be our PPE, anything throughout what we had to do.
That's what I was going to ask, just, I think I know, but the type of things we were spending this money on related to COVID-nineteen would primarily be stuff like PPE and.
I can, I'll be, I don't have it right here in front of me, but I'll be glad to send that detail out to you all in an email after the meeting if you'd like to have it, as far as exactly where that is.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Or my question would be, is that, okay, this is the second read, we haven't sat as a group of council members yet to discuss anything about the budgets to see what other agencies that we may need to consider doing more for. Or example would be medical help, or drug and alcohol. I know there's state agencies, but the, I wouldn't say problem, but the issues Collington County's issued where we fall, where the state doesn't give them the proper appropriation, those individuals that live in Collington County are our citizens, the homeless shelter, being closed practically every other month. You know, those are some of the things that I think as council members, we should look out for the benefit of all the citizens in Collington County. And we can't do that if we keep forging forward with budget without even having a conversation, because there are some other suggestions that is there that I know I personally have that could be ways to get some additional revenue for us to operate with. But if we never have a conversation as a group, I don't feel that I should bombard you or any of the other council members should bombard you as the administrator and come in there individually with our own ideas. And that's why it's important to me that we sit and have a discussion as opposed to. Now maybe you like it better with each council member coming in with their own separate agenda, but you know, if that's, if that's the case, then I'll do whatever, but we've never discussed those type particulars before because we've never had an administrative meeting for us to find out the proper protocol. Because I've been there, done that, and I know it's aggravating when individuals start coming to you with their own agenda, rather than hearing everybody at the same time and hash out which is, out of the five, which is the most important.
Well, first of all, as far as, we, we're going to have that meeting as far as the initial workshop. Obviously, that got canceled because of the COVID situation. That's what I'm proposing that we do the first of August. I know we have second reading, but all we were trying to do here is just tee it up and then us have it ready and primarily all the budget work's really going to be done between second and third to when we know where we're going to be at the state level. I would suggest we have a very robust conversation when we have all that information in it because y'all, so y'all will know where we are from a revenue perspective, exactly where we are and what we're going to have to deal with, and how you want to deal with any, you know, possible shortfalls as far as that's concerned. Secondly, I serve at you all's pleasure. I'm more than welcome to hear any ideas that you may have to help assist with the budget or other revenue items, you know, to help out move, you know, as you know, moving forward right now, pretty much every budget we've had has just been a very marginal incremental increase. So if you want to do something over here, it's got to come from somewhere else to move over, you know? It's just not a, a situation where we're really seeing any type of serious windfall as far as revenue goes. Certainly, if you would like to come, any, anytime any of you would like to come sit down and discuss those items, I'm more than open to it. But I, I feel like we, that meeting in August, we can sit down and have a really good, deep conversation and address any of those items that you would wish to, or any of you would, you know, at that time. We'll try to gather, prior to that, send out some information to gather any specific things that we need to get information back for you to discuss at that.
Well, traditionally by now, you know, we've sort of done that, but.
Right.
With having this continuing resolution, the states have on us, they don't know what's going to happen until September. It's hard to, other than to do a continuing resolution, it's hard to really make any other real prediction to where they will quantify what's going on. But I do, I agree that obviously at some point, we've got to have a meeting and sit down and go through the particulars. Mr. Chairman.
Question. I just wanted to ask, I mean, I know you talked about the budget. And as it relates to the proposed fee schedule that came out, you want to do that and the...
Yeah, and I was, I was going, I meant, I was going to hit that, and we got the, that's some work that was actually done prior to the use of the situation in our permanent office and planning department as part of the budget, the comprehensive plan and zoning side to update. I think our fees had been updated sometime. That information's in there for you. This might not be the ideal year to do it with everything else going on, but yeah, we can certainly go through those as well when we have that, the big budget meeting.
And then the only other part is I, I did see some of the outcome. I think you may have already fixed a couple of houses with that LRT group. I saw a lady yesterday and she was all excited. They came and put my chimney back on, they fixed my roof, and they're coming to put a floor in for her in one of the hardest-hit neighborhoods. And I think it was one of those situations where it wasn't FEMA-qualified and that kind of thing. So I've seen the work and a lot of excitement from the people in the community about the county and the city actually working together on these kind of projects with, with the nonprofits. So I just wanted to reference that while you were talking about it.
I think Mr. Taft, who's on with the committee, has been, he was what was formerly habitat for humanity, they've now rebranded themselves into a different organization, but they have already started reaching out and doing some, some work as a community, as far as that goes. Uh, let's see here. I believe that's all I have for you this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. We'll move on then. On the agenda, item seven, whole business item eight, second reading order that's twenty-dash-oh-dash-zero four to provide for the levy of taxes in Collington County, South Carolina for fiscal year July one, two thousand and nineteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, to provide for all other appropriations there and to provide for other matters related there to be. We have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? I might just point out, we just discussed that, that the fee schedule, I think we actually attached it. I assume they'll take that up in our meeting. Okay, if there's no other discussion, all the papers say, if I'll say an aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Remove to item eight, new business item eight, resolution twenty-dash-R dash twenty-three to declare April fair housing. So move.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? Here again, all the papers say, if I'll say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here again, the motion carries unanimously. Bring us to item B, resolution twenty-dash-R dash twenty-four to approve a policy of non-discrimination on the basis of disability status and designates an ADA for the.
Ooh.
Second. We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Here again, all the papers say, if I'll say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Bring us to item C, resolution twenty-dash-R dash twenty-five to endorse the two thousand and twenty community development block grant, ready to go application for the Collington County bucket buildings demolition project and funds for local match. So move.
Okay.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, you, you.
No, no, I, I seen you, man.
So, you're only in the.
Well, you know, I was kind of curious here because the low bidder is well below anybody here, really, and what, what's apples to apples, oranges to oranges? I mean, in terms of how can you really?
What are you talking about?
You're the next one, aren't you?
Don't care about the demo.
Yeah, it's the next one. It's the next one.
Okay.
My, my injection would be, and I know it may not even associate, but I just wanted to let the record reflect that if we are going to demolish, and I agree that building need to come down because of the damages, but we need to consider the next building that is built to replace it needs to bear the Floyd Gotten's name.
Okay. I'm sure, well, actually, we, I guess we can go with the whole plan of things, what the building is getting ready, but I don't understand your. All right. Any other discussion? Here again, all the papers say, if I'll say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to item D, resolution twenty-dash-R dash twenty-six to award a contract for the Ace Greenway Trail Project Trailhead Picnic Shelter. So move.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I, I made the error on the last resolution, but that's one, when you look at the numbers, it's just so far in contracts. I'm trying to determine how can this, this group actually pull us off?
Are we talking about the picnic shelter?
Talking about the trail.
Yeah, the trail. Yeah.
That was not anything.
The low bidder is at one forty-three.
No, no, you're still, one, you're one more factor.
Yeah, I'm ready to go.
Although I, I do have a question about this, this particular one as it relates to, I'm not, some of these bidders I'm not familiar with. How does the local enterprise play in this?
They were, actually, the first, the nearest one was IP Builders, Inc., and they, it's a three percent bid, but they were not within three percent.
I noticed they're listed twice. Why are they only twice?
HB Builders.
HB Builders. Well, I keep bringing on my glasses, so.
Well, I keep bringing on my glasses, so. It's the light between IP and IB, that's pretty clear.
Without speech, without speech.
Yeah.
I was thinking the same thing.
Just to add on this, we actually bid this when we did the trail as well. This was an add-on that, uh, PRT allowed, allowed us to add on. I know the community was real interested in getting a picnic shelter, the trailhead, some other things. Uh, we came in a little high on the trail side. Uh, I think Carla and Zach really worked with the contractor to, fortunately, you got a real good base in our real little bit. We weren't, didn't have to use as much material on it. So they got the savings and got the shit back within the grant. Um, so we were able, go ahead, able to get that up as well, so that's good.
Okay, any other discussion of this pick-up? Here again, all the favors say stop by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Bring us to item B, resolution twenty dash R dash twenty-seven, to award a contract for the Calhoun County Commerce Center lock rig rating.
Who moved?
Second. We got a motion in the second.
Yeah, Mr. Taylor. If you're the right one.
Yeah, we're the right one. This is what's actually where I have a question. I have it marked on my notes, but yeah, cause you kind of, yeah, anybody can.
I, um, first of all, I'll say that seems like anything that's been bid lately has been a very widespread on. If you look back to some of the things like the rec center, we just got some of the pricing information for the customer service center. And they're like, they said, how about check back with us in about two months? He said, these numbers are all over the place. With what, oddly enough, with everything we're going through with COVID, there's still a lot of construction work going on out there. Um, with that, I know, uh, our folks have vetted each one of these vendors. I think Mr. Jackson's out of St. George, working with some local contractors. Is Carla here? Do you wanna add or, do you think Carla actually?
Um, yes, definitely. The low bid, um, is a lot lower than some of the rest. But if you look at like the next six or eight, they're all really close together. Um, but we did reach out to him, um, and they are out of St. George and he is using a local person here. One of the main differences is that they own the dirt pit and the dirt pit is like three miles away from the site. So that was a huge advantage that this contractor had to remember.
Makes sense.
So we made sure that they were good with their number based on all the numbers and everything checked out.
Okay.
So, so the one that had the, uh, one, one, uh, one million eighty-three thousand two hundred and fifty, where he just threw some numbers out?
It's down the pipeline.
Okay.
Because see, that particular contractor, J.R. Wilson, um, just to know, was the successful contractor on, um, the highway fifteen of having the road intersection. So they will be working in our county and they were very competitive on that one.
I'll have to say that's going right with what our estimated hotel is on these overdoings. They said a lot of these folks are, have got so much work, they're just throwing a big number out there to see if it'll take them out.
Okay, any other discussion? Here again, all the favors say stop by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Bring us to item F, resolution twenty dash R dash twenty-eight, to approve appointments to the Low Countries Workforce Investment Board. So moved. Chair, a motion in the second, just for the record, uh, there's two vacancies that exist on the board. One is for business representatives, one's for an education representative. The business representative, um, the nominee for that is Robert Alessa. He's the HR coordinator, Calhoun County Courthouse Center, co-president. And then the education representative is Chris Holthaus, who is director of Calhoun County itself here.
Okay, but Mr. Chairman, uh, normally when their position's open like that, uh, we usually advertise and allow people to, uh, make application for it. In this instance, I am assuming that these two individuals were reappointed or perhaps, uh, appointed without us, uh, voting on them?
Well, I mean, we're, I mean, we're voting on it now, I guess technically. Um, you're talking about how they're nominated?
Yes, how they were nominated and not given openly to the other individuals that, in the county that may have wanted to seek, uh, appointment on these positions.
Isn't the nomination of these sent directly to the board? Is that the workforce investment board? Did you know, Mr. Griffin, or is that on the?
Yeah, my understanding, because it, and I, the, um, because it's, it's broken down to, um, employment sector, my understanding is that the board makes those recommendations back, like, uh, to find someone that's either business or education representative. But if you wanna hold it, I can get, we can get some more information back. I, clearly that routes through our clerk of council's office and not, not through me.
Did I get that from the COG?
From the COG, okay.
COG, yeah, those nominations go through the COG somehow. That's like, I mean, we're right down that court a while, but it's, uh, they follow through. But I don't know, to answer your question honestly, I don't know.
But, but is it fair to us to vote on someone that they nominated as opposed to us selecting from all citizens ourselves and giving them an opportunity? Because we are over stamping if we, if we do that, if they send two names in, one name for each position, and we may have some citizens that have been sitting for years waiting to be a, a part of that board and, uh, and we allowing it to rotate. So, uh, that's one of the things that we were criticized for, I think, late last year, is that when people get appointed to these positions, they think it's a lifetime appointment.
We do have three members on that low COG board. Three council members on low COG board.
If I remember correctly, low COG opens it up for advertisement, um, to the counties and then, and the represent, I mean, it has to be designated following a certain sector, um, like business representative, education. But honest, honestly, I, I mean, without checking with low COG, if, if you want to table it, I'm, I'm close to it.
No, no, I don't, I just.
Need to educate ourselves for fear.
Okay. I don't hold things up because they may have.
Cause I'm not surprised by the, uh, disappointed that way. That would be, uh, Madam Parker, let's try, if you would, have low COG just identify us the procedures for that. My recollection is betting is done through, through low COG. But if there's no other discussion, we'll move forward with resolutions. Any other discussion? Here again, all the favors say stop by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And that will bring us to item G, resolution twenty dash R dash twenty-nine, authorize the council clerk to advertise for board vacancies. And, uh, there's a whole lot of them on here, um, on this resolution that we have a lot of vacancies on various and numerous boards and commissions. I don't know if anybody has any discussion on this. If not, we'll, uh, call for a question. All the favors say stop by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings to item H, discussion. Do we have a motion?
I need a motion for first or second.
Do we have a? So moved. Second, all right. Now is there any discussion? Here again, all the favors say stop by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Bring us to item H, discussion regarding the Confederate Monument at Calhoun County Courthouse. Um, let me just start by saying we did have citizen, Mr. Brown. Jason Brown, who I do not know if he had sent an email regarding this. And then also Mr. Taylor, um, had asked that we put this item on the, uh, agenda to discuss the Confederate monument at County Courthouse. I will tell you that, um, I think we've come to learn obviously that there's a statute regarding the protection of the monuments that may prevent us from moving or relocating any statues or monuments. But we're here to discuss, let's open up a discussion. I'll open it up. Anybody get any comment?
Yeah, well, certainly, I, like I said, I sent an email, uh, to ask that we have the discussion. I've got numerous, uh, contacts from citizens throughout the county, uh, in recent days. And, um, trying to express and relay their concerns that no one wants to erase anybody's heritage, anybody's history, uh, some, some things regarding safety. Uh, we saw in, uh, in other communities where people, it's not been in our community. We've had several, uh, demonstrations in Calhoun County over the last several weeks. They've all been relatively really peaceful. Um, I've seen quite a bit of activity around the Confederate monument, even in the off times during the middle of the day. Um, I've seen people in and, in the sense of protection, nobody gets hurt, nobody gets injured, uh, thinking that it's in a protected space. Uh, maybe if we could have it moved to the museum was kind of a thought that I had. But nothing, uh, to, uh, destroy or demolish anybody's history or heritage. Just something, a lot of concern in the community, uh, regarding it. And, um, like, uh, our chairman said, as we were doing, uh, I, uh, you know, I did a, quite a bit of research on the, um, the Heritage Act and some other things that are out here. And seeing that it would require a super majority of the legislature, uh, at a time when they're not even taking up a whole lot of issues. I think it, you know, it, just something we need to think about how we can help unify the citizens and bring them together on the same page. And my, my two cents is we are the loved ones.
Any other comment?
I, I agree with you, uh, uh, this is one of the soul eyes of the African-American community. And, uh, and I understand by seeing these legislations how it's protected. But I still would like for us to further investigate because there are other communities that they're making adjustments. And whatever adjustments that we can make, I, I would like for us to consider it. Or again, everybody deserves the right to have their own heritage and protect their heritage. And I'm not against that, but, uh, we don't wanna put one against the other and, uh, create hate and animosity and let something explode when we are here on council that could possibly try to find out more about what could be done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comment? Um, I, only thing I'll say is obviously I think the statute prevents us from obviously doing any, taking any action on it. That, well, taking any legal action or what at this time would be done. I, you know, what I, here's what I don't know. I don't know if there's a procedure that you, that there's even a procedure to go about after the legislature to, uh, do something like that. I assume if it was, it would have to be some sort of special legislation, but I don't know that. I mean, I guess that's something we could find out. As far as the monument itself, you know, I just give my thoughts is that, number one, as I understand, and that's another thing I would ask is maybe if we could get somebody in the courthouse who, I know when they went through this whole renovation process, there was a whole history in courthouse. I'm assuming there's a history of where the monument's been located on the courthouse grounds. Um, I mean, just my personal observation, there's nothing against, against the history or anything. The monument, I don't know why it was moved to the center of courthouse. It blocks, when you ride by the main street there, it actually blocks the view of the, uh, front of the courthouse, which is, I mean, we have one of the prettiest courthouses in the state of South Carolina. And it, and it blocks that. Um, I do think we're kinda in some unprecedented times. You know, I don't think, I'm not in favor of taking anything down. I don't think that really should be done, um, at all. Um, as far as relocation, you know, I, I don't know that you could put it in, in, in the museum. It was suggested, it's probably not tall enough to start it. Um, but one thing we talked about was building that, you know, this is a memorial for Confederate, in fact, it reads the text on it says, to the Confederate soldiers of Calhoun County, South Carolina, those who fought and lived, and those who fought and died, and those who gained much, and those who gave their all. And on the back, it talks, it's to the mothers and the wives of the sisters. This is a memorial, a soldier's memorial. We have talked about for a couple of years now, uh, developing some sort of Confederate memorial park. We haven't gotten very far with that. Um, I would be open, I'm not committed. I would be open to, you know, the suggestion of putting it there. You know, the courthouse is, in my opinion, is, I don't really think you should have anything on the courthouse grounds if you wanna get right down to it. And that's where people go to seek justice. Um, and I don't know that it's appropriate place. I don't think you should take it down either. I don't think that that's appropriate. You know, history is history and, you know, I, I, there was, there's a writing on a mural we talked about ironically. We're on the eve of the anniversary of the Charleston Nine. But if you go to Charleston and you ride by a mural, there, the mural there has center painting actually on it. And it says across the south, we have a deep appreciation of history. It goes on to say, we have had a deep appreciation of each other's history. And that pretty much highlights where we are. You know, I, I think we'd have to some point reached fair balance and compromise of where, you know, we don't need to take this stuff. I mean, it is part of history, but it may not need to be where it is now. You know, I don't know that. I, we need to see the history of that. As far as I know, it was nineteen eleven that monument was erected. I don't think it needs to come down because it does commemorate Confederate soldiers. But if I had had, if it'd been my choice, it wouldn't have been in the front of the courthouse. I mean, it obstructs a whole view of the courthouse. I mean, if anything, it should have been less probably where it was at before. But in any event, tonight, I don't think we can do anything because the legislature says that we can't. And then maybe they're addressing that issue and it may turn out, there's nothing we can do, period. But I don't think that it would hurt us to kinda get the history of this thing. And, uh, maybe in our, uh, meeting that we're gonna have, we oughtn't also include part of that discussion about this particular park that we want to develop as far as the Confederate Memorial Park. But that's my take on it. You know, I, I, I wish that we weren't having to go through this, you know, divide that the country's going through now. You know, I remember when I was a little kid, you know, we didn't have, we had, I was real little then, though. We had three TV stations, two, four, and five. And you could only get one of them if you had some aluminum foil. But, you know, we didn't have twenty-four hour news feed and we weren't constantly going hard at the things that were going on. And I remember when I was a little tiny kid, the first thing that, when I, I stayed with my grandfather during the summer, cause my parents were separated and my dad was working. And the first thing my grandfather did every day when he got out of bed was we went down the road to check on the neighbors. And, you know, just to see if they were all right, if they needed anything. It turns out those neighbors were actually Mr. Buckner who sat on this very bench with me, his family. You know, that, when I was a kid, I didn't know that. I didn't know Floyd Buckner. Odd as my daddy said, they called him then. But people took care of each other. We didn't have this twenty-four hour news feed and all this stuff. You know, I know it's, it's very simple and we'll never get back to the time where people just check on their neighbor. But if we just took care of each other and our neighbor down the street, we wouldn't have a lot of this stuff going on. And I think we have, do have to consider everybody's perspective on this thing and how, how it affects them. Tonight, I don't think there's anything that, that we can do related to this.
I just, I was just, I, I, I had to watch you have a serious question. You know, uh, some of these people that died in, in, in that war, probably that's the only war they had. They had no tombstones anywhere. My grandfather happened to fight, he was that one. He was conscripted at age sixteen to go fight. And so he had, he, he didn't have anything. He came back and had it. So I think you exactly right. You know, we took care of our neighbors and our friends and they can do what, whatever they want, or even anything we can't do. There's no such thing as welfare. We gave, people come to my dad's house at twelve o'clock, I'd do the job and get up and finish it. Anything, he had a little store. He, he, he give him credit. He didn't know what they were paying the doctor. He didn't care. It was, it was a neighbor's thing to do. And that's how I was raised. And that's the way I'm trying to live my life is by helping my fellow man and by being a, a neighbor to everybody and a friend to people. And this is, uh, what I think we need to come back to. It's too much to visit this in this country today. I hate to see it. It worries me. At my age, I, I just hate to see something like this. And I hope that something good's gonna come out of the turmoil you're seeing now. And hopefully, we'll be able to have, have, have an amicable relationship with all of our community people. I certainly hope this, I, I certainly hope this will happen. And, and I, I believe, well, I believe the Lord will take care of us and I think that'll happen. I still hope so.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think, uh, this, this is almost a moot point at this. At this point, it, it, because it says, there's, um, section ten, one, one sixty-five says that. it has to have the approval of two-thirds of the general assembly or something like that. And then the monument, I'm gonna believe it will not get moved.
Okay. Well, here you have other discussions. We'll move into council time. Any members of council have anything to add?
This chair, here's what it turned up, uh, coming up, uh, this Thursday. Uh, ten o'clock to three o'clock, Bell Elementary, Better Healthcare is gonna be doing COVID testing for people in the community down there. So several people can't maybe, uh, come to town to get tested, maybe at the, the testing sites here in Walterboro, but, but actually, um, our EMD and the county has been working very closely with, with Better Healthcare to make this, uh, possible, and they will be there Thursday from ten to three. You really, uh, if you, if people have their, uh, their, uh, health cards, they can take it, but I took my health card. They didn't even look for it. So, pre-register, go get a free COVID test. Of course, my test is negative. Uh, you don't know what happens day to day. Uh, just do everything to stay safe. And certainly, uh, got another call this afternoon. Uh, earlier this week, I was contacted by Mr. Roy Williams and, and this, uh, Jesse Gooding about, uh, Juneteenth, uh, celebration, uh, and the coming together. And, and this afternoon, Mr. Frank, uh, Cuccinello from Cottageville, uh, he called and he said he wants to get a, a group that will help unify, uh, people in the community. And he was thinking that maybe Juneteenth could serve as that. Um, I just told him, I'll, I'll get him in touch with Mr. Williams, Roy Williams, and see if we can bring those, those elements together. But I do want to thank everybody for their purple support, uh, in my reelection in council and, uh, the level wishes I, I thank you.
Congratulations, by the way. End up, probably, give me a shout out. Um, I wanted to, a couple of things I have is, one is I was, um, not able to get, there, there was a situation, I think all the council members had spoken to the sheriff about the situation at the jail. I was not able to coordinate with the sheriff to, to have him be present here tonight, but I am going to ask him to give us an update on it. And he'll soon reach out. And if we need to have a meeting about that particular, um, situation, then we can call a special meeting if y'all want to, or he can communicate us en masse about it. We just weren't able to get coordinated tonight. So, um, I don't know. Mr. Administrator, did you have any update on that?
Not anymore than what you already know.
I will certainly make sure we get some, some updated information. The other thing I have is that, um, we had a young man in our community. He was a senior at Calipari County High School. I wish we, uh, things were different. We could have him in here, but apparently he received the, uh, South Carolina Association of Counties scholarship. Um, his name was Fred D. Chambers. I don't know Mr. Chambers, but I'd like to congratulate him and his family. I'm not aware that, have we ever had a, a young man in Calipari get a scholarship from the South Carolina Association of Counties?
That I'm aware of.
So, um, he may be the first that I'm aware of, but I just want to congratulate him and his family on, on that scholarship. Has anybody got anything else?
I, I, I have something. All right. First of all, I, I want to let the administrator know that I appreciate him and I appreciate the things that he does. And it's just that sometimes I always speak out on something that, uh, that I think that needs to be spoken out on without any, uh, I guess without any, um, apologies. Or, one of the things that, uh, that concerns me, and I think you touched on, on one of it, and I'm not gonna go back over that particular situation with the, dealing with the sheriff, uh, it's just that when things like that happen and, uh, personally for myself, as one of the stewards of the county, I would like to know, when you, when you find out something like that, I'd like for you to share it with us. And, uh, so that we'll have those information. When citizens come, you know, I get sort of embarrassed when they come with certain information and, and I don't have a clue to what's going on. So it's like, I feel like I'm blindsided by them when they have, uh, some questions, uh, uh, like that.
I was not in the chain of communication on that particular issue. I think you all were directly corresponded with, but I didn't know anything about it until, um, actually the chairman and Mr. Taylor called me to inform me. I think they were all corresponding directly with you all on that particular situation.
And then there was another incident that happened at the jail that, you know, I think would have been good, uh, nice to have heard about it not from the public, but from someone, because they gossip stuff. I'm not here to collect gossip. I rely on you as our ears and eyes in our absence. Uh, and the incident that took place on Sunday when I was coming through, uh, um, uh, from Greenbahn that I saw, or, you know, it would have been nice to have known about that at some point. But other than that, don't feel that I'm always complaining or whining, but you never know what my thoughts are unless I share it with you. Rather than sharing it publicly, I prefer sharing it, sharing with you, sharing it with you. I don't know whether you prefer me coming by the office and in one bar and, and talk to you or, or what we, but when we have our meeting in August, hopefully you and I can establish some type of relationship. So we'll have one type line of communication that we need to...
You can come by anytime.
Okay. Thank you.
Just thought I'd curious what happened in Greenbahn.
No, we had, and it happens from time to time. We, we have a hot loop, what we call a hot loop. A loop will get left on the transfer station over a Sunday to a Monday, and sometimes it'll get too hot. Um, it happens from time to time. By the time I actually found out about it on Sunday, it was already out and taken care of. So, um, anyway, I'll be glad, I'll, I'll do a better job of making sure you all get that, that information out to you, uh, as it happens.
Yeah, some, some of that, Mr. Williams, might be on me. Um, and, and I, your email about not meeting, I mean, when, this is, in all the years I've served in my lifetime, we're in most unprecedented times and, and what, your, your comments were certainly taken and and let's, let me say this, we're all elect, all five of us citizens, dentor elect, represent our district. And even if you do come in here and you're mad, frustrated, raised an issue, you have every right to do that. I, we're not gonna, um, you know, none of us are, are holding that against you. Sometimes in our positions, uh, things get tense, tensions get high, but that's what we're elected to do. So I certainly don't get, I don't take any of that that way. But some of that communication might fall on me rather than Mr. Griffin, just because we weren't communicating. I was busy, honestly, and I just couldn't communicate back with you, but, um, unfortunately, I'm like you sometimes, but I don't know everything that's going on. We do need to try to, uh, communicate, you know, now with email and stuff, you know, we do need to try to communicate, keep each other up to speed a little bit better than we do at times, but...
One additional question, Mr. Chairman, or because I know I want to be asked as soon as I leave here, is the meeting being changed to having a virtual meeting as opposed to a regular meeting, where there are no publication that I observed that, uh, that stated, uh, we were gonna have a virtual meeting instead of a public meeting?
Well, we certainly put it out that we were having a virtual meeting.
We had an emergency ordinance, sixty days at all meetings, it'll be virtual. And it was posted, my understanding was in, the court posted it in the, in the eleventh on the, in the newspaper as well as on the website.
The agenda was posted, but not stating any changes of, that say it was gonna be, uh, a virtual meeting. Because I, you know, checked to see whether it was online and we didn't have it on our web page either, uh, unless I oversighted it. So, which could be possible, but not likely.
Um, well, I hope maybe by time we get into, uh, uh, least August, you won't, you know, maybe we'll, we'll, we'll bring the end of the virtual meeting. We can get back to normal, but of course, that's out of all of our control at this time. Okay, if there's no other comments, then we'll move to item ten. We have an executive session, discussion of matters concerning the marketing promotion of Walterboro Calipari County to encourage location expansion of industries and businesses. So move, your motion to move ahead. Second, any discussion? Here again, all pay the same if I say hi. Any opposed?